I'm the Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please come forward to the mic or open your mic. Give your name and address to the Secretary for Record. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. This meeting is, we know, is videotaped for record. It's important that only one person speak at a time and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendation on all petitions by the Commission are then forwarded to the City Council. Are there any questions? If there are none, then the Secretary will call roll and will begin with our first item of business.
Tom Bailey, excused. Brenda Moore. Fred Zawarko.
I'm here.
Anobia Dallas.
Here.
Yolanda Jones.
Present.
Floyd Clock.
Here.
Jack Nash.
Here.
And Jim Nightingale is excused. All right, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
I have to remember to unmute him, thank you very much. Okay, the first item is approval of minutes from June 23rd, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve, or do we have any corrections or deletions?
Move adoption.
Support Brenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So move Brenda.
Second?
Support Yolanda.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, aye. Okay, so our new business, really, the first item is actually not our new business. We discussed this last meeting, it's a table. We're going to come back to this meeting. So I think we have somebody on from the city to talk to us for a little bit, is that correct?
That's correct, good evening, I'm Amy Losson, the City Attorney. I think you're on the opting zoning ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to touch base with you with regard to kind of summarizing ordinance itself and what the role of the Planning Commission is. As far as what the role is of Planning Commission at this point, though, this is certainly a more intensive amendment to the city zoning ordinance, your role at this point isn't all of that dissimilar to what it was with zoning amendments that came before the Commission, specifically with regard to the rezoning of certain business property on State and Davenport that was brought to you by Mr. Denha. Your role is kind of similar at this point, it's to review the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and make a report to City Council as to whether you recommend approval, disapproval, or approval with certain changes. So that's where your role is at. This zoning ordinance amendment is one of a pack of ordinances that would be going before City Council. This is the only one that would go before the Planning Commission at this point. But specifically, this goes hand in hand with a licensing ordinance that is similar to the city's general business licensing ordinance. This package of ordinances together would allow for the city to opt in and allow recreational or adult-use marijuana establishments within the jurisdiction of the city. Specifically, this would allow growers of all classes, excess growers, processors, retailers, secure transporters, and safety compliance facilities within the city of Saginaw. It specifically prohibits at this point the establishment of micro businesses, designated consumption establishments, marijuana event organizers, and temporary marijuana events. The zoning ordinance establishes the zoning classifications in which each type of establishment would be allowed, so those allowed establishments would be allowed in M1, M2, and M3. And additionally, retailers would be allowed in B1, B1A, and B2 zoning classifications with certain business zoning classifications. The zoning ordinance also establishes review and approval procedures for each type of establishment based on the level of development that is occurring. The Planning Commission has approval or waiting approval in accordance with its special powers under the zoning code for any new marijuana establishment, any major expansion of an existing marijuana. The Chief Inspector, on the other hand, would obtain approval for conformance with building and zoning regulations for minor expansions of those marijuana establishments. The zoning ordinance also establishes separation distances for establishments from certain sensitive uses, such as churches, schools, parks, and other public property, other marijuana establishments, and what have you. I know that was called into question during the course of the last meeting. That is certainly something that myself and city staff took a very hard look at, and in the first drafts of this zoning ordinance, the setback requirements were much larger. But as we looked at those requirements on GIS and we started mapping things out, we realized that if we maintained them as they were originally written, we've effectively precluded any development within the city. So we kept looking at those setbacks from sensitive use requirements and narrowly tailoring those down to maintaining distances from those sensitive uses while actually meaningfully allowing development of marijuana establishments within the city. And that's, the numbers that you see in the current draft are where we landed at in that regard. So that's kind of a summary of the ordinance, and of course, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
This is Fred. I just, I wanted to tell you that I had a conversation with John Stempel earlier today regarding this, and when I read this over and digested it over the past month, it kind of gave me the feeling that we were mirroring the same ordinance that we would apply for liquor establishments as well. And that was kind of, I felt like that was the basis of it. The only thing that I had a concern about and was where we addressed the distance from schools, be it private or parochial. I just kind of felt that I think we should maybe address like state licensed daycare. As I kind of drove through the city, because I was like, I wanted to get a feel of this, there was one daycare center on Rust Avenue that is adjacent to an M1 area that used to be the old Eaton Manufacturing, and I think that's on one of M2 now. I just had a concern about that being so close to that facility. I would assume that's a licensed daycare center, and I just, I just kind of thought that maybe that should be addressed as well. It was just that one spot, but normally daycare centers, I'm sure, are throughout the city, and they're probably in B1, B2, but that one was kind of really adjacent to that M1.
And I appreciate that concern. I can say that daycares were included as a sensitive use in earlier drafts of the zoning ordinance. I think it was one of those uses that we determined, you know, needed to be tailored out in order to, again, try to come to a compromise where we could establish meaningful development within the city. And one of the other considerations was, you know, while there might be some daycares that are found within these allowed zoning classifications, primarily daycares do seem to gravitate towards residential, residentially zoned areas, and therefore, they're buffered just simply by the fact that these uses would not be allowed in residentially zoned districts.
Right. Yeah, and that was the only one that I kind of saw, and I was like, I just wondered how many were close. I know that they're either going to be in residential or maybe close to a B1, B2, or that was my only concern.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there are, did everyone see the new maps that were sent out from Jeff Plopsick today, I believe, on potential zoning with different exclusion zones based upon different distances, buffering distances?
Yeah, I did review them, yes.
All right. I just want to make sure everyone, did everyone else have a chance to do that? Because they are three different ones, and I think back when we first were, Cassie, when we first were sent this, did we have a buffer, similar buffer map? I seems, I recall we did, is that right?
With the ordinance, the group who put together the ordinance did provide a map of all of the allowable properties that could potentially have a business on it.
Would you be able to put that map up and maybe just run through all the new ones?
Sure. Okay, the original ones that came with the ordinance should have been mailed to you as none of the clear bubbles type popping out. The ones that Jeff sent, let me share my screen. Can you see this?
Yeah. Oh, you got the old ones there too, though.
Nope, so this was, there were three.
That's right.
Yeah.
What's important at the top is the distances that are shown.
Yep. So this one shows doubling all of them except for schools, which was already at 1,000 feet. And keep in mind as well with these buffers, all of these colored parcels are the ones that can be used for different types of marijuana businesses, and they can't, they will never all be filled with marijuana businesses, because there are already businesses located in a majority of these properties. So keep that in mind. This is only the properties that may be available at some point.
So that's the one?
This is everything doubled, so this is schools from 1,000 feet, 500 feet from parks, 200 feet from churches, 1,000 feet from hospitals, and 500 feet from halfway This one was farther than that. This put everything at 1,000 except for churches, 400 feet from churches. So whenever a bubble even touches part of this property, now that property would be ineligible.
Those are all, the bubbles are just clear, so they don't show what's under them as much as the first one that does have the multicolored bubbles. Probably Jeff couldn't get it very quickly, that one.
Right. So Jeff did this one so that we could see the specific uses that are being buffered?
There's still an awful lot that seems available. What's everyone's thought on that?
You know, I see a lot of available areas, but you know, just to think about this, you know, if anything goes in such as a retail establishment, it still has to go to the Planning Commission for approval. That's a checkpoint, and you know, it probably zoning and go through the city staff.
I would also note, or repeat again Cassie's point where, you know, you do see like an awful lot of orange in that northeast corner, for example, but if one of those bubbles is covering any portion of that parcel, that parcel would be ruled out effectively.
So really up here, it's maybe a couple of these down here, and then this one almost is the only ones, because this one is touching.
Isn't that where the power plant, not power plant, power train is at this?
GM, I think it's metal casting, I think power train is in Bay City, but.
Yeah, metal, yeah, metal, isn't that all metal casting anyway?
I think one of these is, maybe these two.
I think they all are, so.
See, and that's the other point, is that even though these properties may be zoned to allow it, there's already businesses on a majority of these properties, so there won't be marijuana businesses, so allowing, not that we have to allow, you know, all of our properties, obviously, to be marijuana businesses, but having quite a few open will allow for some to come in.
Yeah, I'm just, and I don't know if anyone else is, but I'm looking at what is available under the, if you look at the legend, but B1, B2, B1A, M2, and M3R, and there's an awful lot of those that are available, it looks like, that's what I'm trying to understand.
You know, and I see that as well, but there is a distance requirement, again, for the same type of business being in proximity to each other, is that correct?
Correct.
What is that distance?
500 feet.
And the smaller reddish or pink ones are the 500-foot ones, correct?
These?
Yeah, and the pink ones should be the 500-foot buffer there.
Right, but we can't currently map a setback from existing marijuana establishments because there are no existing marijuana.
Right, right, no, I understand that, Amy.
Once one moves in, another bubble is effectively created.
Right, but yeah, if you do picture, so like this one bubble, that would cut out this whole area, basically, so there would be one along this. There may be another one if these buffers weren't there up here.
Where are you, I can't see.
Oh, can you see my mouse here?
No. Oh, there it is, okay.
Oh, okay. So these bubbles are essentially cutting out, so along Genesee, there may be more businesses possibly if there's available property along Genesee going out of the city. Well, I guess there could be one here, there may be five, but they'd be spread across this, however many miles this length is, and I'm not sure how long that is.
It's about a mile in the city, mile and a half maybe, which isn't bad, though. I don't know, what worried me was the 100-foot from so many things, and even the 250 were pretty small, I don't know how everyone else felt, but that seemed to be awful short. 100-foot for churches, I think it was 150-foot for churches. 100-foot, the original one, can you put the original one back up, Cassie?
I don't have the original map pulled up, actually.
Well, I thought we saw that.
No, these were, this is already doubled.
Okay, yeah, you're right, that one.
It shows nearly all of them, but I can quick pull it up for you if you want, I'll stop sharing and then.
Cassie, I have a question. All of this was presented in our January, in our January retreat that we had, and we opened it up to the city. I just feel like it was, it was an opportunity, and it is now July, which is six months ago. And so, no disrespect, no disrespect there, but all of this that we're talking about now is at a crucial point. And so, this group, this body, has to make a decision. And so, I don't know how many people came to it, my sentiment is, no, I'm not a marijuana smoker, but it's either we're going to allow it or we're not. And if we just talk about canceling out, I mean, I'm looking at, and I'm actually looking at where most of the zones are, and if you really want to be honest, they are in the economically disadvantaged area, and so, in terms for me, my concerns are not so much that, because I've seen all of the plans, most of them, I think, and I think that the city, I'm not going to be like everybody else and say, well, we shouldn't just do it. I'm saying, if we can do it, and I was the one that put it on the floor about the sunset clause, waiting a year, seeing how it works, it's going to happen without us. And the one good thing is, is that we have an opportunity to say, yes, but these are some things that we'd like to change. I don't mean any disrespect to anyone, no, I'm not a pothead, I'm not a weed smoker, because it's just not me there, okay? That's past life stuff. Present life, I am looking at the city, and I understand Floyd's concern about the distancing, but once again, we talked about this in January, and so I think that from now to January, a lot of us board members or council members, we had any concerns, we should have been addressing those then. Right now, we're at a crucial point, and I just wanted to say that, because I'm like, okay, we're going back over what we did six months ago. And so, I just want us to make, to make the right decision. I mean, I got, I wanted to be on this committee so that I could understand how you do what you do, okay? I didn't get on this committee to try to dominate it or control it, I just wanted to see. And from what I'm seeing, I've heard people speak, and I don't want anybody to get miscon, get any misconception. The council has brought this up, and the council is looking for a relief or an answer. If this committee likes it, fine, if they don't like it, then let's move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, go.
Yeah, thank you. Amy, was the distances that are in the proposed ordinance now, were those the ones that were brought to us in January? I thought those were done afterwards.
I don't recall, I'm not sure that in January we, I specified what the sensitive use distances were.
That's my recollection.
No, actually, I sit corrected. As I recall, we did present that map, so I think we've had fine tooth at that point.
All right, I was thinking it was done after, but that's fine.
Right, and I do want to reiterate the point also that any application for an establishment is going to be, for any new establishment at least, and any major expansion, is treated as a special use and still comes to the Planning Commission initially for review.
But from the point, just for everyone's clarity, the point from the point of view of the zoning, if whatever district we agree to, and whatever buffer zones, and council that approves, the Planning Commission can't ignore those later. So this is your chance as a commission. My only question is, at our last meeting, the entire committee voted to table to get more answers. If everyone's satisfied with the answers they've received, then fine. I just want to make sure everyone here has had that chance to have their questions answered, because there was a reason everybody voted to table this. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, Floyd. You know, I just want to bring up back a point that Amy made and Cassie made, as soon as an establishment goes in, that creates a new bubble. And Brenda, I understand, you know, your concern, it looks as though it could be on the east side of Saginaw, but I think it'll probably be, if there's any establishments that go in, will probably be on either side of the river, and then a bubble appears now on the, on that side, or wherever area that is. I did speak to some friends of mine that are from Bay City today, and I asked them about the ordinance, because they opted in, I do believe, and there's some establishments there, and I said, well, what is your feeling about it? They're like, it's almost like everyday business, you know, you see them, you know, people go there, I don't smoke it, I don't need it, but it's in my community.
I did pull up the map with the current zoning, or the map of the current locations that it could be located at with the zoning ordinance, so I can pull that up for you guys again. It's right here. So this is 1,000 feet from schools, 250 from publicly owned parks or playgrounds, 100 from churches, 500 from hospitals, 250 from halfway houses, and then the additional 500 feet from any established business, which we obviously don't have yet, but.
Thank you, Cassie.
No problem.
Now, Cassie, if we vote to approve, we're not the final step in this process. This goes to City Council for their final approval to either opt in or opt out, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you want me to open this up for public comment now, if there's any? We will now begin the public hearing to allow the opt-in or opt, what is it, the ordinance for opt-in marijuana establishments? Is there anybody here would like to comment on this case? Again, we now begin the public hearing. Okay, we have a lot of feedback, okay, go ahead.
If everyone else could mute, maybe then we won't get this.
Hello, is echo still there? No, we're good, okay. All right, we're good, okay, excellent. Yeah, so Robert Denha here, address 4135 Atwood Road, Bridgeport, Michigan. Property owner of the city of Saginaw for many years, and I can't hear myself, so I'm really hoping everybody can hear me just fine. So, okay, wonderful. I'd just like to comment and say that, you know, I reviewed and been listening to conversation, and I was also part of the last meeting. And where I stand is a property owner of the city of Saginaw, which obviously the future of the community, both obviously positive and negative matter to myself, along with my business partners, I, we do also own property and other. I, uh, we do also, um, own property in other municipalities, um, that have, uh, opted in for the recreational marijuana. And kinda had a moment to compare what the city of Saginaw is looking at doing, uh, to some of those other communities. And from our standpoint, um, we believe that it's been a job well done, um, specifically from the ability to, uh, keep it in the districts and the areas that are standard for commercial businesses. Um, and at the same time, uh, not being extremely restrictive to one specific area, quote, what people call sometimes green zones or specific marijuana zones, um, that can, uh, usually does not pan out successfully. It'd be like having all McDonald's or QSR restaurants in the same one block area. Um, so that's just something I wanted to share with you all. And, uh, let you know from where we stand, we think it was a, a job well done. Um, and we think that the rollout and the companies that will come to the city of Saginaw because of the, uh, amount of dispensaries that may fit into the city will prove to bring some of the best companies, um, that operate in the best manner, uh, which will, you know, lead it to a really good, um, competitive landscape. And, uh, and those who come should, uh, remain successful. And that's all I have to say, so I appreciate you, uh, for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment? All right, I don't hear anybody coming on. Um, before I, um, ask for a motion, what, um, what I'd like to do is, um, ask for a motion to approve, or, um, to approve this, uh, opt-in ordinance. But, um, after we get that motion and get the second, Cassie, can you do a roll call for vote?
Yes, but sorry Fred, first we have to close the public hearing, and then we'll do.
Sorry about that. Okay, all right, so, right now we are closing the public hearing, public hearing portion of our meeting. Do we have to do that once or two more times?
We need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote?
You asked for comments three times, but then you need a vote to close it.
Do I hear, do we vote right now, or do you want me to hear a motion to vote to close the public meeting, correct? All right.
I'm at the public meeting, this is Dallas.
Brenda seconded.
Okay, Cassie, do you want to do a roll call?
Um, and then ask for a motion to approve the variant, or approve the, um, ordinance recommended to council.
Okay, um, yes, I'd like to entertain a motion right now to, um, approve the opt-in ordinance.
I'm sorry, is there a vote on the closing the public hearing?
I didn't hear one, that's what I was asking. Do we get a vote on the closing of the public hearing, correct?
Yes, sorry.
All right. You want to do a roll call, please?
I'm gonna do a roll call, please.
Sorry, one second. Um, Brenda Moore?
Yes.
Fred Zawarko?
Yes.
Fenobia Dallas?
Yes.
Robert Hanley?
Yes.
Yolanda Jones?
Yes.
Floyd Clark?
Yes.
And Jack Nash?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the opt-in ordinance for the marijuana establishments. Do we hear a motion to approve?
Don't move, Brenda.
Okay, Dallas.
Who, who seconded that, I'm sorry?
Fenobia.
Yes.
Okay, then you want me to do a roll call again?
Yes, please.
You need to.
Okay.
You have to ask for discussion.
You're right Floyd.
Yeah, I'm getting at my little flow chart here. All right, now we are open for discussion.
If I may, and the reason, I, I just wanna ask Amy, does the ordinance define churches or what would, or, or these different exemption zones? What would define, what would constitute? I don't remember seeing that, and I'm wondering what would be, how would that be interpreted in the future?
It does not define churches, but presumably the property would be held by a, uh, someone who has a 501 tax status exemption as a church.
Does that, did, when you did the zones, did that take into consideration church property that doesn't necessarily have a congregational church on it, but it's generally property? Or the same kind of thing for other, what are the, um, what are the, that? I think it's a question that came up when, in talking to Jeff.
I would have to defer to Jeff, but I think that when he made, was creating the maps, it was any property held by a church.
All right, and, uh, going back to, let me see. I'm sorry, I'm looking back on the.
Although I would note that when measuring from.
Yeah, it was the same question, really applies to parks, hospitals, and halfway houses, what are they described at? It's just, I guess, something to be aware of for the future.
Well, the parks and playgrounds are gonna be publicly owned.
Is that defined that way, or?
Well, the ordinance specifically says publicly owned parks and playgrounds.
That's good, okay. Hospitals, are they defined in any way?
Again, none of the sensitive uses are specifically defined, but I, I think it falls to, A, vote, common definition, and in uses such as halfway houses are gonna be licensed, I believe. Um, hospitals and churches are gonna have tax exemption statuses on the property. That's, that's how we were allowed to identify them in the first place.
Okay, the reason I asked was I can see someone challenging a description of a hospital or church if it's not really active, if it's not active on the, that, if it's owned by the church or by the hospital and not actually operated as a church or as a hospital facility. But, I guess we'll have to live with that. All right, that's all the discussion I had.
Is there anybody else that would like to have any input or discuss this? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the opt-in ordinance?
Motion in a second, and opened it for discussion, so you can move to vote.
Be a roll call vote, probably, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, Brenda Moore?
Yes.
Fred Zawarko?
Yes.
Fenobia Dallas?
Yes.
Robert Hanley?
Yes.
Yolanda Jones?
Yes.
Floyd Clark?
Yes.
And Jack Nash?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we do have, um, the next item is discussion of shipping containers. Is there anybody to present that, or are you doing that, Cassie, or, uh, John?
That'll be Bob.
So, um, we have had recently some, uh, requests by individuals to have shipping containers as an accessory structure in their, on their property. And, uh, while we feel as though those are useful, uh, structures, don't feel as though they are useful in terms of acting out as an accessory structure in terms that, uh, we defined it in the zoning ordinance. And so, this, uh, this is really more for, uh, discussion purposes and consideration. What I would like to do is, uh, define those containers, and that would include, um, you know, commonly known, uh, definitions of, of them, like, uh, the pods and the, uh, Conex boxes and similar types of, uh, containers. Um, we would like to define those more as a, um, as an accessory build, a temporary accessory building, um, designed for storage or construction. And, uh, we currently have, uh, that definition within the zoning ordinance. Um, but it really is more for construction. So what I'm suggesting is that we include that definition, or have that definition include the, uh, the, the storage or, uh, shipping containers. And then, uh, put a limitation on the, um, duration of, of placement of those facilities, as well as, um, require a permit for them. So the language to, uh, amend the zoning ordinance is presented in this report. So I'm looking for some direction from the planning commission. Um, any suggestions on modifying any of this language? And then if you are, um, amenable to, uh, pursuing this, I would, uh, come back with any changes that you propose, and then we would have, open it up for public comment as well.
Okay, so today, so today we're only gonna be, uh, you're bringing this to us to review this, and then you're bringing it back for, um, a vote to amend the current ordinance, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and I'm looking for any, uh, modifications, if you see any, or suggestions on changes as well. And then I would bring it back with those changes.
So we're gonna table this until the next meeting then? Is that what you're telling us afterward, review this?
We, we could bring it back to, for the next meeting if you, um, would like to discuss and propose any changes now, or, um, or I can, uh, scrap it.
Yeah, you wouldn't table it unless you didn't wanna discuss it now. I think Bob's trying to get our input at this point for future, for a future meeting to come back and present with a proposal. Is that right, Bob?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I like the idea, Bob, just from my perspective. I think it's important to get this defined and controlled by the zoning ordinance. So, I appreciate you bringing it up the first place.
This is Commissioner Hanley, I have a question, might not be entirely relevant, but, uh, across the country, there's this tiny house movement. And these storage containers have been used by many people in communities around the country for houses. And I know that your, your proposed ordinance, uh, or change, uh, deals just with, uh, these buildings as accessory, uh, buildings. Is there any evidence in Saginaw of anybody using these containers as houses, as tiny houses?
Not that I'm aware of. Other, uh, communities have, um, allowed those types of facilities, but we don't, as a community, even allow accessory buildings to be used for dwelling units at all, period.
Okay. Babe, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Floyd.
Yes, please.
Maybe the question, Bob, is should these even be defined as, as accessory buildings? Or simply left as, um, a, as a storage containers and similar things? Cause that's what they are, they're not intended as buildings in the first place. So I'm wondering if we should not even have it under the definition of an accessory building, but should have its own definition?
Well, in essence, it, it is, uh, giving it its own definition, it's, it's defining it as a temporary, um, building or a portable storage. So it's, it's moving it to a different location.
Are there any examples in the city right now where they're using them, or not?
Uh, yes, there are two that I'm aware of. Um, one is on North Michigan. Um, there's a business that, uh, details cars, uh, and does some other things. Um, and they use it as storage, uh, set next to their building. Um, and then there's, uh, another business in the Old Town area that uses it as storage for some equipment. And then I have gotten calls from, believe it or not, residents who want to put them in their backyard as a storage facility.
I would think that would be kinda costly versus just getting a, uh, a metal shed from like, uh, a home, uh, like Home Depot Lowe's or wherever, you know, but.
Bob, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I speak, can I ask Bob a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Is, is this just like what they call the pods? Cause I see pods around the city. So is this similar to the pods? Cause if that's the case, my record has pods, um, trying to think of some other places. I've seen businesses with pods, which are storage units. And I know that if I put a pod, I can put a pod on my land, unless you're telling me I can't. Cause as far as I know, it's just a storage unit. So I, I guess I'm trying to figure out if this is a new thing, or are we talking about, they call pods, that's what they call pods. People actually put their cars in them, they actually have storage space on their properties, and they pay, I don't know if they, I'm sure they pay rent for them every month, but is that what you're saying? Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Robert?
Yes, so, those are, uh, yeah, they're, it's not new. A lot of, uh, companies offer those. If someone is, uh, moving to another location, you can put a pod in your driveway, and you can load it up, and, and then have it taken to the, uh, place that you're moving to. Or if, for example, you're doing construction in your house and you need to move furniture out and store it for a temporary period of time, and then, uh, then you do your construction, and then, um, move it back in, and they take the, the pod away. So we are allowing those sorts of things. It would be, um, one of the suggestions that I have, and I've researched some of the other, uh, communities that have them, and, um, they allow them for a 30-day period. You have to get a permit, and then you can renew it, um, three times within a 12-month period. So you could have it up to 90 days, unless it's being used for construction of an actual, um, building.
Chair, I have a question, this Yolanda.
Yes, sir, Yolanda.
Um, Bob, how does this, um, relate with the form-based zoning? Cause you brought it up North Michigan, and I thought North Michigan was a part of the form-based zoning. How is, had we looked into what the form-based zoning says about these type of buildings or structures?
Well, again, um, that's why I'm, I'm proposing this, because I, they, they don't fit within the form-based zoning at all. I mean, it, they're really a storage facility, and so, um, they could be used on a temporary basis, uh, for storage, but, um, only for a limited period of time. but, um, only for a limited period of time. And, uh, and then they'd have to remove it, um, except for when they're constructing of a new facility, like, for example, the Merry Free Bread, Eat Free Bed. There's, uh, several of these, uh, types of, uh, structures sitting around there, um, with equipment and whatnot.
So the form-based zoning doesn't speci, say anything specific about this? Is what you're saying?
That's correct, yeah. Form-based zoning is really more in terms of, uh, matching, uh, construction. Matching construction with, um, what's, what's there now, um, matching the, the architectural and the look.
So that if you did, if this was added, then what you would have to modify the form-based zoning to, or the structure would have to be in line with form-based zoning? Of that specific area?
No, this would just be a temporary structure. You would bring it in for a period of time and then you would have to remove it. It's, it's designed for storage, period.
Okay, so this is simply temporary?
That's correct. That's why, that's why I'm suggesting that we redefine it and put it under, um, section 153491, um, which, uh, talks about temporary or portable storage containers in relation to construction.
Thank you.
So, I do for Mike's record who has pods in front of his building, and he's had them there. So what are we saying? People that have them have to move them? Because it's been over 90 days.
Well, typically when you, uh, amend a zoning ordinance, uh, anybody who is in non-conformance, uh, simply remains as illegal, non-conforming use. Um, so they would be grandfathered.
So they could leave there?
Yes, that's correct. And if, and I don't know, um, I'm not familiar with what, um, Mike has, uh, whether they, do they lease those out or not? I'm not sure, but.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I just, so that, that's how I knew about pods. Because I think it had like a roll-up. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
That's Floyd.
Thank you. Uh, Bob, I, I think my confusion is, look, I, I agree that what you're doing is necessary, but in adding the language you've put here under 153021, accessory buildings, the cargo containers, et cetera, uh, are considered temporary buildings or portable storage containers as provided in the dress of 153491. But in looking at the section of 153491 you put here, it doesn't describe or even mention storage, with storage, um, containers. And that's part of my confusion. Nor does section 153021 talk about storage. It does talk about for use incidental to construction work, but it seems to me that there's a disconnect between the section 153021 and then 153491, that there's no language that makes the connection between the reference in 153021 that you've added and the, and the language currently in 153491, that's a temporary buildings for use incidental to structural work. Because A, I don't consider them buildings, and I would be hard pressed to talk about them as buildings. And B, they don't talk about storage. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that somehow 491 needs to talk about storage. Because any kind of storage facility that then would make sense from the referral in 153021. You, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair, um, observation. And, um, that's something that I could potentially work on to bring back to you, uh, to review.
Okay. That, that's all I'm asking because it just, there's a disconnect there. If, as an attorney going from one to the other, if it isn't referred to in the second one, my answer is you've referred me to something that makes no sense.
Yeah. Well, our entire zoning ordinance has lots of little examples like that.
That I believe. I, I've seen some of them. So let's not create another one. All right. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to discuss this? All right. Where's my agenda? Okay. We've completed that discussion on shipping containers. Now, uh, on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move, Brenda.
Second?
Second, Dallas.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Bye.